Okay, it's six o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. Pursuant to Governor Achilles. March twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty five revised orders suspending certain provisions, they open meeting on P L chapter thirty eight, section eighteen. Extending the rule of participation through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty seven. Meetings of the Berkshire Hills Regional School District School Committee will be conducted by person in their own. Agenda items for those reasonably anticipated by the chair, not all items listed may in fact be discussed. Items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being recorded by C T S B, school committee recorder and the Berkshire Edge. Once transcribed, improvements will be made public and posted to our website. So let's do a roll call, we have at least one person online. Allison Reed. Mr. Dear new to the elephants, would you please introduce yourself?
Yes, here. Hello?
Yeah. Sarah Tenetti?
Here.
Uh, Bill Vogel?
Here.
Bill Fields?
Here.
Diane Singer?
Here.
Sarah? Rich DeHoney?
Here.
And Steve Van and present. We have the minutes from March twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty five to have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, Sarah Tenetti?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Bill Vogel?
Yes.
Bill Fields?
Uh, I can't vote because I wasn't here.
Okay. Diane Singer?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And I, it is unanimous or modest standing. Superintendent's report.
Okay, um, so we're gonna, um, start with Ariel and then work our way around. So, what's going on in my mind?
Well, good afternoon, everyone. Uh, please, just starting with the good news. We had Matilda a little while ago, and that was awesome. Uh, we were very, uh, the high school was very proud to host the middle school performance of Matilda musical. It was, as someone who went to watch it, I watched it twice and it was, God, it was fantastic. Yeah. I, for, and I was like, is this better than the high school production?
Uh-oh, don't say that, you're gonna get trouble.
He's terrible.
That wasn't in your nose.
No, but overall, it was fantastic. I, I had such a blast and being able to watch a production after being in it, it was just, it was so great. Um, and also a big props for all of the cast, all of the crew, all of the directing team and how supportive like the whole school was, all the school community and admin for allowing all the connections to have there, allowing the middle schools to take a spot on our stage. Um, for me, we're moving on to Restored Justice. Um, Restored Justice group was able to go to Newton, Mass this Tuesday to attend the Schools redesign and action conference. Where they spoke about what RJ was, how it's implemented in our school, how they could implement it in other schools and even went on to demonstrate some um, serial conversations. After it was all over, I was lucky to attend. There was multiple positive remarks and everyone just came away like with a great positive experience, somebody will tell them something. This was awesome, I'm so happy these students are leading this. We want to take this back to our school. And just as a side note, there was some very tasty food. Stay, stay, oh, it was fantastic. Um, wrapping up, I think this is the last time we're gonna mention it. Um, students came back from France from the exchange trip. Um, visited multiple landmarks, um, with the Church de la Chantilly, the Cathédrale de Notre Dame. And made some really strong bonds with our exchange families. I was lucky to go, I am now, um, very privileged to say that I now have a second family in France. And I still text my correspondent every day. And it was-
Did you speak French all the time?
Um, speaking French, like roughly eighty to ninety percent of the time.
Yeah, that's great.
It was great. Um, I called it a life-changing experience, it was amazing. And just a final tip and parade, you finish the third quarter. The most stressful quarter for me, in my opinion, but now we move on to just a final little bit, one quarter ago, seniors are about to graduate. And I'm a little sad, I'm gonna miss everybody, but we can all breathe a little bit easier and get a fresh air. Um, for some challenges. We, I didn't notice any of this because I was away for two weeks, or we can have. But, um, we've noticed that the students have having, as the week school year goes on, we have become a little more lax on the rules and the students are a little more lax on the rules following. So, we have noticed how admin has started to implement the rules that were set in place again, and it's just from what Mirabelle has heard, it's been a little um, almost stressful that some teachers and students have kind of difficult kind of adjusting. And are somewhat frustrated and confused about protocols, but it is just admin doing and implementing the rules that have already set in place and students have had some less, oh, okay, we have to follow the rules again. That's about it for us.
Thank you. Uh, Christopher, anything to add?
Uh, yeah, I have a couple things. And I'm very complimentary, thanks there.
I, um, I, I won't speak so much, uh, about the things he mentioned, but, um, Mr. You, as you know, we had a half day, we had a P D session. Um, during this time, the teachers were put into mixed groups to review each other's unit plans and assessments with regard to between the unit plans, those assessments and the standards that they're teaching. Um, while just that is a worthwhile, uh, exercise from which we can learn a lot, it really won't be on my expectations. Um, over the years, I've heard teachers say many times, whenever they collaborate. And it, and I've realized more fully what they meant, because yes, we can work with our English colleagues, but we may not have an opportunity to work with a math colleague or a science colleague or whatever. Uh, and we have them mixed in that, in that way. Um, so while we have had teachers collaborate a number of times this year, this experience was, was, um, richer because of that cross-partial collaboration. The discussion that went on was amazing. Uh, teachers were incredibly engaged. Uh, just a few little points, talking about how sta- uh, about standards and how rigorous our work is or not, or and comparing those kinds of things, discussing indicators and competencies and, um, how well we're aligned in those regards to the standards. Um, what they noticed about each others, uh, how each other developed their units and what they might learn from each other in that regard. Um, in a lot of ways, I heard was discussion on what others were doing in effort to the people asking them questions to learn about our best plan and teach so that they can inform their own practice. Um, again, a lot of discussion about, there was also discussion about choice, I've heard that a lot as well. You know, what kind of choice do you offer your students, how do you offer that, how do you offer that choice, maintain the rigor and the, um, the standards you're assessing? Um, the depth of the conversation was informative, rewarding and affirming, and it's certainly something we're gonna do again. Um, I was, I was very pleased with it.
Did anyone come up with any clever ideas to reduce absenteeism?
We didn't do that, we just think with the unit plans and assessment, but maybe we'll do that next time, let's put sob on that actually, Ariel. Um, I, I wanted to dovetail that with, and I think I spoke about this before, everybody is maybe aware of our instructional lead groups. We have instructional leaders, the groups, they each have a group that meet on Mondays and we meet with leadership on Tuesdays. Um, the groups, you need to say that part, um, through, through the year, we have done four instructional rounds where teachers discuss certain instructional strategies in their instructional lead routes in advance. Um, you know, during their time, and they schedule with, with their colleagues on a particular strategy, come back the following week and discuss the strategies again. What they learned, what they saw, that sort of thing, and we've had a reporting out on this as well. Um, I've got a, a lot of feedback from the leads about how rich the discussion has been and how interested the teachers have been in learning more. Um, it takes, it takes out some real vulnerability, you know, to discuss with your colleagues, oh, I'm not very good at that, I saw this thing, I want to be better at that. Um, and in that way also engaging in their own professional growth. I don't intend any instructional leadership groups as a principle, it just feels like it's gonna be more natural for them, they're gonna have, they're gonna be able to be more vulnerable and have, uh, more honest conversations. I hope more in-depth conversations without me there, but it leaves, I meet with them every Tuesday and they there's been like three times in the past, I don't know, four or five meetings where they just gone on about, you know, how incredible it was. All that to say, you take that picture of the half day yesterday and you can take this instructional leadership groups and their feedback and what I see is, is really developing this culture of, of you know, knowing that we've not necessarily arrived in the world, trying to get better. And we have a growth mindset and we want to learn from each other and still be off. So I just, I've been really pleased with that. Um, you know, I see my own work as a lifelong journey, you know, as long as I'm, uh, principal, I want to get better, I know I have weaknesses. Um, and, uh, it's, it's really a great way to see the teachers, um, with that same mindset, um, so I just wanted to share that. Uh, but I do want to mention one thing that Ariel mentioned, the drama productions, I wasn't able to go until I had to go out of town for a family situation, but, um, but there was so much talk about it. Um, on Monday, it was Monday morning, right? It was just, it's just the last weekend. There was so much talk about how amazing it was, I went to several of probably three or four, um, rehearsals, just go in there, sit down with my computer, do some work and just watch what's going on, how many kids, like seventy kids or something like that, it was just nuts. And it, it was a lot of kids, it was just this controlled chaos that, um, that they just, they managed the directors. I guess Josh is the main director, but there seemed like there were about three or four directors, um, did so well. And I just, I was floored, I had, you know, several short discussions with, um, Josh and said, you know, this is our theater program. I'd love to have them come up with a form out of school every year. Um, so, um, you know, meeting girls was, was amazing this year, it was just, everybody was talking about that, it was such a high level of performance. I, um, was never involved in these things at high school, but I've developed an incredible appreciation over time um, for what, uh, the skills that the kids develop, you know, and what they can bring, you know, and I compare that to not to not to not point out somebody, but to point out just one aspect, like the boys basketball team, you know, and how those kids develop their skills over time, but here you have me and both, and look at the skills that they have up here, it's just incredible. Um, so I just wanted to say that, I'm really proud of those performances and, um, I just, uh, want to be super clear that I just think I will support that, that work, I think it's so valuable for our students, so I love it. Um, and then the challenges, bums and air bugs are definitely creeping out. Um, you know, we have challenges with, with students who should be in class one time, getting in school one time, be in class one time. And for me, I absolutely agree that, um, we are teaching reading and writing, but we're also teaching the soft skills, which helps students be successful in the world. Um, we're a great school, but I believe we can be greater than we are, and then, but this can only happen if we're really serious about our work and we're really serious about the time that we have in class. Um, it's all about time to achieve our goals. Um, I, I take it all very seriously and I, I know that, uh, students will rest the occasion as we continue to reinforce certifications. Um, and we appreciate your support.
Thanks, Ron Catty. So a- a- as we get to the middle school, I'm gonna share some stuff that Jake shared with me to share. Uh, he's actually at Shakespeare and Company where the seventh graders are presenting, uh, Macbeth tonight. So, that's why you can't join us. Um, so the first thing he wanted me to share was that they've got a good start on this year's M cast, thanks to Assistant Principal Ellie Rizzo uh, for heading up and organizing that effort. Uh, thanks also to the teachers, paraprofessionals and others who are helping proctor exams and to the students and exam, uh, to the students and their families for taking the exam seriously, but as Bill would like to hear, not adding unwarranted pressure to people's young lives, so um, that seems to be going okay, yes.
Tests still required?
Yes.
Not required?
No, no, they're very much required, and this is a big misconception at all levels, so third, fourth grade, uh, fifth through eighth grade, and, and then really ninth grade and, and tenth grade at the high school. Uh, what changed with that referendum, um, was it's not, uh, required for graduation. Uh, but for a host of other reasons, uh, we still find that the testing, uh, valuable. Uh, it lets us analyze sort of our kids making progress, it lets us look uh, at our own growth, uh, at teachers' growth and us in relation to other, um, other schools and, and other districts. Uh, so they're still required, uh, but, but they're not required for graduation. So that's heading them almost there. Um, the, so a little more about, um, Matilda, I'm, and this is, I'm reading Jake's words here, "I'm struggling to come up with the words to describe what an amazing achievement this year's annual DuBois musical was. Matilda was performed to three sellout audiences this past Friday, Saturday and Sunday, the performances were astounding, the sets and costumes were perfect, the technical aspects of the show were flawless. What is most remarkable is how a group of adults and young people created a community through theater and took over seventy ten to fourteen-year-olds to build a sensitive yet powerful experience for young and not so young alike. Congratulations to the team of neighbors who make these shows possible, the directors, musicians, choreographers, self-builders, costumers and parent and high school volunteers who put in so much time and effort for months to bring the show to the stage and to all of us. Thank you to our neighbors in Monument for hosting this show this year, allowing several hundred more people than ever to enjoy the work of our students in comfort. Thank you to the families who deal with months of complex rehearsal schedules and pickups to allow their children this opportunity. Congratulations to over seventy student actors, technical and stage proof for bringing to life a truly magical and transformative experience for all in attendance. Um, the DuBois tradition of stunningly brilliant theater has once again been upheld and in fact propelled forward. Thank you to the Mahawi for supporting our sixth and seventh graders attending How to Survive Middle School through a grant to fully fund transportation. Uh, so that's a mouthful. Uh, on the challenges front, uh, we're continuing to take on unkindness and improve on an already strong culture of belonging and togetherness at DuBois. We're doing this through formal work, including professional development and many levels of serious conversations with students and families in one-on-one, small group and large group settings. We continue to work toward ensuring that everyone knows they have an academic and social home at the DuBois Middle School. So that's what we got from Jake. Uh, Cynthia, what's, tell us about what's going on in money bro.
Yes. Hello, um, hi, thanks for being at Money Bro. Um, last Friday, we celebrated our paraprofessionals, which is really awesome, it was paraprofessional week, we had a breakfast for them. Um, our paraprofessionals and a- as I assume all paraprofessionals in both in all three of our schools are really good glued, hold together our days. And of course, our days hold together our year, so, um, they are really important to us and, um, Betsy DiAgostino has taken so much time to think about their needs and help to support them in both professional development and then also with, um, the breakfast and just making sure they feel heard, hearing their concerns, hearing their wishes and everything, so um, that was really, really wonderful and, and we will reap incredible benefits from that coming going forward. Uh, we also had a really Cupid's Overload E K and Kay concert. Kim Chirichella outdoes herself every year. The theme was literacy, they sang and all had costumes on, they sang on the stage um, to their families, um, they sang a Goodnight Moon song, which was, you know, the, from the book and they all had like, you know, the the hat and the cat and the mitten and the, it was so cute, and then they also sang a Brown Bear song. They sang a We the Pooh song, I mean, it was just, it was beyond adorable and Kim Chirichella and all of the people that support her did a really wonderful job. Um, we also had another performance of B T G. They came, they come to our school for fourth grade, the fourth grade writes a play. Um, they choose one of the fourth grade, one of the, in each classroom, they choose one play and then they perform it, and today was the performance. Um, they do two classes at a time, so it was Bonnie Grover and John Broderick's class today, families come in, they watch the play, they were well-written, well-performed, well-received, um, so that was also a huge win and I'm, I'm grateful for that partnership with B T G. Um, the kids learn an incredible amount in that, um, in those workshops, so I'm grateful for that. I want to, um, also talk about our professional development that we've had, just like Chris. We've had some really wonderful professional development as of recent. We actually had Jill Pompey come back to our school to do some work, um, with our early educators around, um, Hegarty, which is a program that we have that is a phonics, a phonics program, a phonemic program around phonemic awareness, so like the sounds that kids are hearing before they even can recognize the letters that go with those sounds. Uh, and again, our teachers were so grateful for the time to have that professional development. But we also had another round of our number sense, um, to, uh, professional development from Sue Looney, and again, um, this piece was more around coaching. Teachers are very happy to have an opportunity to sit with their illustrative mass curriculum and then talk to somebody about how we do this, how we incorporate the number sense, you know, what does it look like, so um, that was really wonderful. And then that has been paired with, um, other grades are then looking at the strategic plan for literacy for next year, since we're not, um, planning on purchasing a curriculum. They're talking as teen levels and looking at resources that we have, things that they've done and really thinking about planning our strategic plan. We also have had our two really great, successful M casts. Um, we did fourth grade last week, um, E L A. And that was great, the first day we had a hundred percent attendance, the second day maybe not so much, so we have a couple of makeups to do for them. And then today we had our first day for third grade, they took so much time to do it, they took so much care, it was really wonderful. They have their second day tomorrow and today we did have a hundred percent attendance for third grade, which is amazing, and I'm grateful for families and for teachers, you know, to really get the message out there, that it's important, please come, please do your best, and I think feels like they really are. Um, my challenge at school has been one that has really been creeping up on us this year, it's our early morning drop-off. And just to sort of set the setting for this, we have an early morning drop-off that starts at seven thirty-five for our staff. And so any staff member who has a student at our school can drop their student off at seven thirty-five, so they can be to their school and in their classrooms and teaching by eight. Um, there have been people, there have been exceptions made over the years that I have, that I, you know, are now, you know, come to school and there are exceptions there, I now own those exceptions. And so more and more and more families are saying, I need to be here at seven thirty-five, I can't, so, and I have really said, um, that unless it really is, is, and, uh, really, um, you know, critical to, you know, your job or whatever, you know, unless I really have to make an exception, I prefer not to. But I have had to make exceptions, so that part of the morning is also growing. And then in addition, we have early morning drop-off for then families that are not staff members, and that starts at eight o'clock. And our, um, typical drop-off is eight thirty-five, so it's thirty-five minutes early, we, I staff it with, um, paraprofessionals. We had forty-four kids in the gym the other day. So it's a lot, a lot of families are having to access that early morning drop-off and it is becoming, um, it, it, you know, I'm gonna have to add another staff member to it and it's becoming unsafe in the gym, because now they're all in the gym and you've got kindergartners and we offer a, a quiet space and a community room. Um, but not a lot of kids take that option, so, um, one step I would like to take is I would like to, um, to ask families that if they are, they, students need to be dropped off before eight fifteen. Because a lot of families are dropping kids off at like eight twenty, eight twenty-five when they, it just, it just, it's just too many kids, right? If, if you don't need to be somewhere by eight fifteen, um, you're, then you need just need to wait until eight thirty-five when regular drop-off starts. Uh, and then I think next year, I need to sort of lay the groundwork for just going back and not having exceptions for other families, giving them enough warning and saying the seven thirty-five to eight o'clock drop-off is really only meant for staff and you know, apologizing, you know, for those families that, you know, that did get into that, but I can't keep making these exceptions.
So can it have a, an effect on, um, absenteeism? Are families just gonna stop taking their kids to school, or is that too extreme, uh, forecast?
I, I really don't know, and I, some of the conversations that we had around this have been about like, could I partner with Berkshire South to do something about it? Um, and I certainly could, um, you know, do like a Google form to gather more information about it. There are not many schools in our county that start before, um, eight thirty. And most, you know, communities don't have an early morning drop-off. In Pittsfield, their early morning drop-off is staffed by the Boys and Girls Club, which is what made me think about, maybe I could partner with, um, Berkshire South. But I think we could all imagine that as the economy gets tougher and tougher and jobs get slimmer and that there are gonna be more families requiring help. And so I just, you know, I, there might, I need to, might need to do something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Bridge, thank you so much. Oh, so we're, we're gonna shift gears a little bit now and, um, we are gonna grant approvals or donations to improve today. Uh, and I'm gonna have J P Oden come up, he, he's our director about his school time and, and he's gonna talk about three possible scenarios, we're not making a decision now, we're just sort of foreshadowing, uh, some things that, that, uh, we're gonna consider o- o- over the next, uh, the next several months. Uh, and to give a little more context, and I hope I'm not stealing your thunder and sharing it. Um, um, uh, fifteen years ago, we got our first, um, twenty-first century grant with the district, which is a big deal. And it's a, a federal grant. Uh, and at different points, it's been at the elementary, middle, elementary, middle, high, now it's primarily the elementary and middle. Um, but, uh, uh, like all good things, sometimes funding streams dry up and, and that's the context he, he's gonna share.
Yeah, so, um, as, as Peter mentioned, we're coming up on the end of our current twenty-first century's, uh, grant cycle. Um, the twenty-first century grant represents roughly a little more than a third of our funding for our after-school program. Um, so it's a significant chunk. Um, we are not guaranteed to not get it, we are not guaranteed to get it. Um, at some point or other this year, Peter and I started talking more about, um, preparing for a situation in which we don't get it. Um, and asking ourselves also whether we do it back wanted, um, whether it's still a good fit for the needs of our community, so in, in, in the interest of preparing for, um, for the worst-case scenario, Peter asked me to put together this memo, which sort of roughly outlines some of the different directions that we could, um, that we could move towards. Um, it is important to note that at this point, um, the, the Cleo after-school program is the largest provider of after-school care um, south of Pittsfield. Um, this is not something we can pick up and drop on Um, this is not something we can pick up and drop on Berkshire South. Um, you know, we are, um, on average hosting about a hundred students a day um, at between the two schools. Um, Berkshire South's capacity is sixteen. Um, so, um, this is something that we need to think about very carefully and make sure that we're not leaving our families in the lurch. I think Cynthia's, um, comments were very timely. Um, I, and I would agree with her that, um, our families are going to, uh, continue to experience more stress in this area. Um, the most, um, obvious, um, solution to our foundational problems is something Peter and I talked about earlier, the elimination of my own position. Um, I'm not trying to talk myself out of it. But, um, from a fiduciary standpoint, I feel obligated to do what's best for the district. Um, the Twenty First Century, um, program gives a lot, but it also asks a lot. Um, one of which is that the director position is required to be a full-time position for the district. It also requires site coordinator positions at each school, lead teacher positions at each school, then qualified faculty. And in our case, we also have an intern coordinator that we're re- required to have. It is my opinion that we can consolidate a lot of that administrative work into fewer people. Um, so in the event that we are not under Twenty First Century constructs, we can actually run a more efficient program, in my opinion.
Does that mean we're not going to apply for real?
Um, that is a decision that has.
I need to jump to the, to the end of your presentation, but I mean, that's, that's a logical question.
That is not a question that I feel comfortable deciding. Um, that would be my recommendation. Um, I don't think it is a good fit anymore. Particularly as Twenty First Century focuses more and more on very specific types of academic intervention. Um, they want highly rigorous project-based learning using a specific project-based learning model that is promoted by a company called Edge Curious. Um, and if they are not seeing that at a hundred percent, um, uh, commitment, we're not gonna be renewed. Um, so frankly, we can apply. Um, I'm, I'm not sure that our chances are very good of being renewed, full stop. Um, I also don't know that anybody's gonna get renewed. This is a, this is a title for federal department-led grants.
You said enough.
Yeah. Yeah, it just seems really prudent for us to pretend this is going away. And if a miracle occurs, we'll deal with it. I'd rather deal with that, um, and be prepared. Um, so, uh, so there are, uh, like I said, a couple of ways that we can, that we can deal with this. Um, that decision to not apply or apply is above my pay raise. Um, Peter and I were certainly talking about it. Um, so, um, I, I've got a little bit in the memo there that's sort of our current status and our current mission. What I'm proposing, um, is that, um, we we broaden our mission a little bit, um, to focus on activities which are highly engaging, support social development and provide opportunities for homework support, um, in the middle school. Um, that based on priority, um, priority feedback that I've gotten from parent surveys is where parents want the, their, their, uh, their after-school energies to be spent. Um, uh, parents actually consistently place academic supports last um, in the goals of the after-school program, which again is the yet another misalignment with Twenty First Century. Um, what parents want for kids doing after-school is being engaged, having an opportunity to socialize in a positive and healthy way, um, and frankly be safe and have so much gap. So focusing on those priorities, we have actually built, um, a, a, a very effective, I believe, program. Um, parent satisfaction is very high. I do wanna call out really quick two people you probably don't know. Um, uh, Molly Isat Murray is our site coordinator at the elementary school. Aritha Whitehead is our site coordinator at the middle school.
Hi.
Happy to be here.
And, um, the, the, the two of them this past year have really focused on this new priority, um, trying to keep things highly engaging, positive social interaction. And I believe it has been a, a, a positive experience this year. So that said, um, I would suggest that we take the administrative position to a half-time administrative position, um, who would be an employee of the district, so that that person has access to power school, internal communications, other systems that would be necessary, um, to do basically most of what I have been doing. This administrator would then double as either, as the site administrator of one of the two sites. This is what I would suggest. So basically, get rid of me and promote one of these two ladies. Um, or something like that. Again, this is all hypothetical. Um, I'm not, I'm not necessarily saying this is where the way to go forward. This is one way we can go forward. Again, continue to, um, to focus on high-needs students. Um, right now, we do have to prioritize, um, for high-needs students because of the grants that we receive. Um, there are occasionally families who are waitlisted, um, and that is based, um, entirely on their level of need. It would be nice if we didn't have a waitlist anyway, but there are those. By focusing also on high-needs, that has also allowed us to tap into Title I's, um, funding, which has been a significant chunk of our funding as well. So I gave you three scenarios. Again, hypothetical, very rough. Scenario one, everything exactly the same as we're doing it now, but eliminate the director position. Um, this would represent no change to family experience. Disadvantages would be the director duties, um, would have to be reallocated. Somebody, I mean, I'm willing to eliminate my own job or cut it down, but it does, there is a job there. Um, somebody has to do that stuff. Um, um, right now, my job is, my, my title, or my salary is paid under Title I. I don't know if we would even be allowed to just reallocate Title I on that. Right? That's a question that we need to be determined. But simply looking at the math, take away this position, take that money, throw it back into the system, and it's almost a wash. Um, so that's one scenario. Scenario two, we just cut that.
These are dollar amounts in this?
Yes, yes, sorry. Um, it's, uh, I apologize. I think it's a good idea.
I, I would say that for this phone is very helpful.
Oh, okay.
Excellent, okay.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, scenario two is basically cutting down the number of students that were, that we are reporting.
Okay, I'm so sorry.
No, that's fine. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And relying less on Title I funding. So, um, it's cheaper, but we're serving through our families. Um, significantly through our families. This is set up for sixty-four. So as opposed to currently a hundred. So that's with, um, with Title I funding only being used for buses, you know? And then, um, uh, third sort of draconian scenario is um, no Twenty First Century funding, no Title I funding, and no ASOS funding. ASOS is the state grant that we get, um, which is also not guaranteed. Um, but we've gotten something from the state every year. Um, the, uh, the sort of draconian scenario is that we remove highly qualified staff and rely almost entirely on high school interns, um, to essentially data set. Um, so, um, with busy activities, um. Again, that's sixty-four students. So it's fewer students than are currently surveyed. We would be serving, um, them less, um, robust content. Um, but that is sort of the cheapest option. Um, again, these are very rough starting points. Um, you have me for another two months. Um, I am more than happy to spend those two months building out the best possible system we can build for the money that we have, or the money we assume we're going to have. Um, you know, all I sort of need is, is the, the, the board's direction, what, what priorities, um, you, you would want me to focus on.
So can I ask you?
Yeah. So, so this is gonna be off the wall, but that's okay. It's gonna bother me if I don't say it. We need to serve as many kids as we can after school. But I heard Cynthia tonight and Stacy did don't. I think we need, the way the economy is, the way parents have to work, they don't get to dictate what time their jobs start. They don't get to dictate a lot of things. While we're redoing this program, then we have no money. I think we have to look at it before school, too. I think this, I think this is a major problem. And what better time to look at it when we're redoing this program?
Yes.
I think instead of saying, oh, well, we can't do anything about it. Berkshire South will take sixteen of you and the rest of you better find another job. I, I think that Peter may have to do magic with his grants, which may not be possible. We don't have money. But I think the world has changed and we need to, we need to figure a way to do this before and after school.
Well, the other scenario that we've never explored before is whether we're willing to ask families to pay some portion of, of the after-school and people.
Or some families, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's worked for Berkshire South, which I have all the admiration for in the world, has scholarships. So you charge X amount, but if you meet certain criteria, you don't pay anything. So there is some funding and many parents would be very happy to do that in exchange to have someplace safe for their kids to go. And other families who can't do it, we're not charging. I just think while you're redoing this, that this, the world has changed and we need to, we need to keep up with it and we need to have a safe place for kids to go all the time.
I, I agree. And that's one of the reasons that I threw in the, the, the dollar amount per hour per student. Um, that was for comparison, um, Berkshire South is twenty-three dollars a day for the after-school program. So that's, um, that's a da- eleven fifty per, per student, um, per hour. Um, so, you know, in several of these scenarios where on par with or less than, than, than Berkshire South, then you're one of the other options that parents would have to go find. So I, I don't think it's unreasonable to ask parents to kick in something, um, or to ask some parents or.
With a good scholarship program.
Exactly.
But, and, and I'll say this, we heard from Cynthia, Jay's down here.
Right.
The, the fact is, there's a, a mirror image at the middle school with that problem.
Right.
And we just, we just need to figure out a, a brilliant solution. I have no idea what the answer is. And I hate people who tell you what the problem and have no answers, but I don't. But we really need to figure this out.
Okay. I mean, I think an important thing was we wanted to get this on your radar. We're not asking you to solve it. We'll come back to you with some, some additional proposals. But, but we thought it was important to just start talking about it now. So that, uh, when we come back to you in six weeks or something, uh, we're, we're good to go. Uh, the, the, the sweet spot, we think, is first grade through sixth grade. Increasingly, as our seventh and eighth graders are involved in, uh, more athletic opportunities or things like the musical, uh, even though it's not all, any of them, or I guess the athletic thing could be year-round if you were involved in multiple sports. But, but, uh, the, uh, first to sixth graders, uh, we think makes more sense. The other thing we've talked about is having the fifth and sixth graders start in the middle school and then move them over, um, after the, the elementary school's dismissed its regular day. So all the kids are in, in one building and, and it might be easier to, to manage.
I think if there's a handful of seventh and eighth graders, then there's a way to include them. Again, there are kids who may be in need that after school doesn't work. But, you know, but I think we just try to service as many kids as we can and that's, that's really important.
Yeah, I, I mentioned institutions that don't want to handle it.
Yeah.
Okay. The other thing we need to mention, though, it's in the memo, is, um, Berkshire United Way has been a big partner in this, uh, and, and we hope to continue to receive funding from them.
Yeah, we have, um, we just completed the application for two addition, two more years of that. They do a two-year cycle. Um.
That stat about us being the largest provider south of Pittsfield. Going a long way in that application, that's.
That was, um, it was actually rather stunning for me to realize as I dug deeper and deeper into this, realizing that there simply isn't any other option, um, for many families.
And if you look at, again, Berkshire South, on days we either have snow days with professional development.
They're packed.
They're absolutely packed.
They're packed.
There's no place for kids to go around here.
Yeah. Yeah, um, and that is something that again, we should be looking at. It's, you know, historically, we don't run CLEO on half-days. We don't run CLEO on teacher workdays. Is that something we should be looking at? I don't know. Um, but, um, I, it seems like a good time to realign the needs of our community.
Things have changed and this is a perfect timing for it.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're interesting.
Yes, yeah. Um, so we're gonna transition to another thing. I'm gonna ask Christopher to come back, uh, up. And I'll, uh, click on his slides, um, but he'll, he'll do the, the talk. He moves the slides. Okay, there we go. You wanna scroll back to the first slide, please?
Thanks.
Yeah.
Um, first of all, I just wanted to ask, is everybody a Portia graduate?
Yeah.
Yes, I've been here about ten years.
Yeah. Not ten, moving forward, thank you. Okay, so. The Berkshire Portrait of a Graduate, uh, website can explain what a portrait of a graduate is better than I can. So I spoke some lines there. It's a unique opportunity for cross-district collaboration within Berkshire County. The aim of the project is to support deep research, stakeholder engagement, and especially to reflect the vision of what all high school students will be able to do by by and beyond graduation.
There's a website for this?
Yeah.
What, what is it?
Just a bunch of Berkshire.
Yeah.
And you'll find it. Yep.
Not portrait, not P O G dot org or something like that.
No, no. I'll, I'll, I'll send the link around later. So this is literally.
Oh, okay.
So the next slide, please, Peter. Um, Portrait of a Graduate can also be known in your graduate profile, Portrait of a Learner, Habits of Success, Lifelong Learning Standards. I really like that, uh, that bold portion in that first paragraph up there. This vision describes skills and competencies that our community agrees that some people need to thrive in learning, work, and life. Uh, we all know that our students are, uh, facing, uh, different and increasingly complex, directly changing world as they grow up. Um, so we're trying to understand that, understand what they need and attend to it. Next slide, please. This is the first official year for the MLRHS involvement. Um, as an official member of the Berkshire Portrait of a Graduate, our goal this year was to complete our own portrait or adopt the BART K twelve, the BART twelve model. We had ours by eighty percent complete and it was, of that eighty percent, it was eighty percent of that eighty percent was, was perfectly aligned with what the BART twelve was. Um, so, um, we had some, um, discussion at administrative level. Then I reached out to a number of teachers who had been, um, deeply involved in this. And I said, listen, you know, we can put together, uh, another committee and, and keep pushing this forward or we can, um, we can, uh, recognize that ours is mostly the same as our twelve and adopt that. Um, all of their unanimous among the six teachers I spoke to, let's go ahead and talk to the faculty about this and, uh, see if everybody wants to adopt it. Um all of their unanimous among the six teachers I spoke to, let's go ahead and talk to the faculty about this and see if everybody wants to adopt it. Um so we met as faculty and decided to do up to an awful BART twelve model. It was unanimous. Every person, it's really weird, it's like, yes, let's just do it already. So this will now act as our vision for our student skills and competencies. You see a visual here. Which is, again, it includes all of those indicators, the the big picture items, standards or skills in the work, and then the indicators. Uh this is the official BART twelve poster, uh which is great and um if is. If this is what we're using, then they can print them for us and we can have them and all that sort of thing. Interestingly, one of the teachers reached out to me. And it said, Christopher, what if we you, if we had the same um. Uh competencies in language, but if we had. Um, oh, I can't remember the languages we used. It was Spartan something. It was, I sort of liked it, actually.
Like the monument way or?
It could be, but it was like Spartan skills or, I don't know, it was something, it was something sort of cool, you know, and we could just personalize it, really. Is what they were talking about and I thought that that might be a really cool idea. So um we just did this recently at a faculty meeting. I'm going to meet with a couple of teachers about that and so we may develop our own poster. In the meantime, we can also have this poster, which would be uh just the same, the same language, same. Uh skills and indicators. Overall, our involvement, uh we have a team that includes Colin, uh me, Pete Lorgio, five teachers and five students. Um some combination are required at the different uh BART twelve meetings throughout the year and the entire team meets at the school a few times a year. We attended our first collaborative collaborative instructional rounds. This was in Valley High School a few weeks ago. We had two students. Uh me, Pete Lorgio and Colin and Elsa. Um we we did instructional rounds and then as a whole group and used the um the BART twelve model. And um in framing the discussion is about what we saw and and what we aspire to, how our students learn and what teachers do. We're gonna continue to do business and ultimately we're gonna host. We won't, we took the host this year. Uh and the intention here is that collaboration, um really. Not dissimilar to what I was talking about with the teachers we were doing yesterday. Um in May, my name of the students will participate and if so, state discussions at countywide student voice summit with peers from other high schools in the region. That's where we're at right now. So we adopted and we're moving forward.
Okay, any questions or reactions?
There was a lot of money that went towards Portrait of a Graduate. How does that relate to what you're doing now?
So it's based on grant. Through the bar. I'm not sure what that has to do with.
There's a line item about Portrait of a Graduate.
Yeah, maybe I'll call and speak to it. Colin can speak to it a little bit.
So the. The stipends that were discussed at an earlier meeting in relation to the portrait are for our work in this collaborative. So the idea was that if we were gonna start doing things as a district. That kind of took us out of the district or had us doing things outside of district structures, just like when we asked teachers to do things out of their contractual obligations, stipends are provided. BART twelve created a stipended set of positions for the work in the portrait collaborative. So members from every district get the same stipended positions. And that includes our teachers, our administrators, and even the students who are part of our work stream at Monument and come to these events. Who facilitate these discussions with their countywide peers. They even receive stipends through B C C. Um and can can kind of access avenues of of connection that way as well. So all of the funding comes through BART twelve. They have their own bar grant. It gets a little confusing even in our conversations.
Within.
That's why. It's a separate bar.
Oh, it is.
Yes, separate grant entirely.
Okay.
And I see it gets a little confusing because it's all bar funded, but different streamlined, different works and and different initiatives, basically. So we as a district have our own bar grant. BART twelve acquired a bar grant specifically focused around connecting the county. With this focus on instructional practices, school and classroom experiences. So this year, as we joined in, the other five schools that are already been working, we joined as the sixth. This student summit we're participating in in May, it's May twenty-second. Um invitations have also been extended to the other. If I have my count right, four high schools in the county that are not a part of this collaborative. So that they can kind of see the work we're doing. They can bring students to participate in these discussions. Um it's shaping up to be a really great day. I meet regularly with the team that's coordinating and planning that. We have another one coming up. Um our our summit theme, if you will, is a school for all students this year. So really looking forward to engaging our students with these students from across the county and. What are their classroom experiences? So we can create just kind of some consistent experiences as a county. Though it it may be a large geographic area, but Berkshire County is is its very own kind of unique place that is very proud of being a part of this county. And we have all these deep connections through academics, athletics, extracurriculars, all of that. And that's what BART twelve is looking to do with things like the student summit. Is give students from all of these schools another opportunity to network with each other while growing these skills that are just absolutely vital for moving forward in life, like. Facilitating conversations, being reflective, examining data, things like that. So the the money you were talking about comes from BART twelve's bar grant specifically. And that's the same kind of way we go through with this process of bar, talking about instructional practices, classroom experiences, and how we can use the funds to drive all of that to a better place.
And so that shouldn't change because it's a private grant.
Correct.
Nice.
And is is separate from ours, so we can, you know, we continue to have our own conversations with bar about how we can continue our work streams. They're never gonna counter each other or be in conflict with each other.
Sorry, sorry, ladies, I'm doing about those nice.
No, it was face slow when you're working.
They would.
I have one more question though. So with all of these headings.
Yes.
Are there certain things that you're working on to fulfill all the need for that next step?
Yes, yeah, so we um we are already definitely having much of that into the work we're doing. So but now this will become, you know, it's it's a a vision of skills, right? And so now this will become integrated in the work that we're doing um and the critical work, the discussions that we have. Okay, so this relates to this right over here and we're doing this over here. And and just really try and understand where we're getting at each piece within the whole of our programming.
And then at the end, is there a thought?
Remember that.
There must be, people must graduate.
Yeah, that's the goal.
Yes.
The portrait must be intact, right? The idea is that everybody that graduates from our school.
Yes.
Uh fulfills all of these in some way. So at the end, is there some kind of presentation? Is there some, where where are you thinking or actually, who's your president's gonna be?
I haven't gotten that far. Colin, are they doing anything in BART?
Yeah, so um one of the reasons why it was kind of the. Best time for us to join this collaborative is the BART twelve collaborative just started the next phase and I believe they're in phase five of this work. So like I said, the the other schools have been working on it for a a fair amount of years now and each phase has kind of been a different part of the process. And so what they're doing right now, and I shouldn't say they are, we are doing with them. Um of those six competencies listed on that portrait, critical thinking is the one that is currently the focus. And so this next phase is a three-year cycle and this was year one of that phase. That's why us joining right now, we were coming on board as they were starting. Some of these new work things, like the instructional rounds that we participated in, Akuzik will continue to participate in. But critical thinking is the focus currently with the idea that through the instructional rounds. And then next year, the next piece is working more into this looking at student work protocol. So we can examine the instructional techniques, but we can also connect that to our student outputs and outcomes. And make sure that that classroom experience is highlighting critical thinking and supporting it. That we can then use this as a model if build resources around critical thinking, if we create structures and protocols. How do we examine critical thinking? How do we define critical thinking? How do we support students in demonstrating critical thinking? Then all of that allows us to then look at those five other competencies and do the same thing. So like Christopher says, it never ends. It really is a long-term work set. Of taking these six competencies and making them alive in our classroom spaces. And while we're having this conversation at the high school level externally with this collaborative. We're internally also having these conversations about how does it vertically live across all of our schools? So all of our students know what we're doing to support them in gaining these skills. And the work we do with the BART twelve collaborative is just to allow us to better have those internal conversations at the same. So whether it ends up being a HAPSO project, whether it ends up being some kind of reflective activity, whether it ends up being part of our, you know, our. Internal release days, if we start dedicating certain days to portrait work. And having workshops for students specifically designed around these competencies. We're we're looking at all of these avenues for how do we know students are accomplishing and achieving these skills? While also how do we know that our teachers, our educators, our administrators are supporting these skills in being taught. So we need to examine it from both sides and support both streams of work and then figure out how they mesh together fully. I don't know if that completely answered the question, but.
It's unlikely to have been more for culminating.
Unless.
Yeah, so we we we're not quite there yet. A a common practice would be to have some sort of. Exit activity or or culminating thing and potentially it could happen in. Fourth, eighth and twelfth grade. You need to sort of be careful around where it happens and you'd like it to be. Integrated and not sort of extraneous uh probably more so than ever for for graduating seniors, right?
Yeah.
A- a- and not so high stakes that if. Like that it happened in May and if they didn't do it well, then you didn't let them graduate, but it probably happens. Earlier, so if they if they miss the mark, they get another shot at it.
Um but you know, just that, I I don't know if. Shifting or adding a lot of doing now, but when you look at this list, you can see an awful lot of things on here that we're already doing. Yeah, so so and then there's like, oh, where are we doing, you know, you find a few that, where are we doing that? Are we doing that well enough? And so I think that's the way we've developed it, but how do we ensure, I I don't know, one one thing that comes to mind for me, how do we make sure that all of our students. Uh achieve these skills and competencies? Well, through the various things they're doing across our programming, how do we celebrate this at the end? I don't really know.
Yeah.
You know, um but uh.
Right, to demonstrate it all at once is not all.
Right, right. Well, for some students.
I will be there.
It could be a portfolio. It could be a portfolio.
You're right, you could.
It would, it would seem, and I guess my suggestion would be, I'd like to see, I'd like to see the this in every classroom. Like when I taught near the the end of my career, rubrics were put up. This is what you need to succeed in a social studies course. And this should be in every classroom because as you've said, Christopher, this is being done in a way in almost every classroom. There's not one classroom that you're not gonna have a need for at least one or two of these or more. Communication, lifelong learner, critical thinking.
Yeah.
I mean, that should be, if you could, I don't know if BART twelve would be able to do it, but you put a, you put, this is why you're here at Monument.
Yeah.
At Monument, we're gonna provide you with the following and it's up to you to see. This is where you're, why you're here. And it can be done in in both extracurricular activities. It could be done, as you said earlier, um artistically. There are so many avenues that many of these go through. It doesn't have to be, and this is what, again, this is not a test. This is a a culmination of four years and it could be done at the fourth grade level. In order to graduate to the middle school. And then in the eighth grade and then in the twelfth grade, of course, the problem is the bureaucracy and scheduling. How would you, if, for example, you were to, um I remember being in a group in which we discussed portfolios. And everybody was really, oh, that's wonderful. And it was to take the place originally, kids actually did this. When MCAS was first introduced. We had kids that refused to take it. And we had a principal at that time that backed them. At the risk of the state almost losing, the almost, well, the state threatened her uh with a loser for principal license. And she said, okay, we're gonna do presentations. Every kid that does not want to take an MCAS will do presentations. And out of those presentations, um Steve Bannon remembers because you were on the school board. Uh Peter, uh the green kid ended up going to the Harvard School of Education doing his presentation. Because he didn't, in front of the school committee. Somebody in the audience said, that was really great. He was in Time Magazine, he was on the Today Show. And it was all portfolio. He did portfolio. But the problem was. You have a hundred and thirty kids. How would you do a portfolio for a hundred and thirty kids?
But that's what I think, uh is, we we really gotta get this completed, Portrait of a Graduate. And by completed, I mean just the paperwork done, like. Done, buy in, everybody understands it. The teachers are totally focused on it. The kids are totally focused on it. Um and then maybe move on to phase two. I would tell you, my. Years on this committee, I've become very cynical. We do a great job teaching here, but we don't really do good at anything else. And the term initiative fatigue has been thrown a lot in a couple of years and I wanna just. Keep that in the front of our minds here before we start doing a lot of restructuring of things at high school, um further restructuring of high school. I think.
I'm holding the law.
This is reinforcing what we do right now.
Yeah, that's, and that's where we're, that's where we're gonna be in the bridge, where we're doing these things.
Yes, yeah.
You know, and and but making sure the kids know and having the teachers know.
Yes, and have it in every classroom.
Absolutely.
I mean, right, every classroom. Thank you, yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
Well, just so you know, you know, we had things of like, oh, um the full portrait in different classroom, but on one of the earlier slides, there's that simplified that just has the six.
Yeah.
Those in the hallways, even, right? The goal isn't to just have it visually on display in our spaces, but incorporate it into the daily language of ours.
Yeah.
Very, thank you both. Um so we're gonna transition to a couple more things. Um. Uh at our last auditor's report, there was a recommendation that somebody on the school committee. Uh volunteer to sign warrants in between the meetings when other people sign them. Uh typically, in a little bit, one person on the spot, I would ask a Stockbridge resident to do it, but as luck have it. Has it, there's only one Stockbridge resident in the room.
I move, I make a motion to assign warrant signing representative to William Boy.
I second the motion.
All right. You said assign, we're just assigning this.
Sometimes Jared can appoint someone, he are appointed. Did you have a choice?
Is there, is there any pay associated with?
You've done your pay doubles, your school committee pay doubles.
There's always candy.
Yeah, there's always candy and Doritos. There's snacks.
All right, thank you. That was easy.
Yeah.
Um the the next one was just a little update on the high school project and I talked to Jason and I thought I I would do it. A couple really interesting things. Uh we went back and forth with MSBA a bunch on the reimbursement rate and the great news is. Our reimbursement rate went up about six percent from forty-three and changed to forty-nine. That is a huge impact.
That is huge.
Right, so I'm really happy to.
It's a game changer.
I'm happy to share that. It's maybe in the six to eight million dollar range when it all gets calculated. So. So, yeah, so so that's a big deal.
Yeah.
Um so, so I'm really, I mean. We're in another meeting downstairs with Stockbridge Select Board and Steve reminded me to share that, so I'd like with that.
Yeah.
Uh but the second thing is um. We found out about a Green Schools grant application possibility. And this is another grant that could additionally reduce the cost of the project. So uh. Steve Soule um and I were talking about it and Donna and I were on the call. We're gonna submit another application. Uh for that and and that could help defray some of the cost of the ground source heat pumps. Uh and and it looks like we might be, or we're gonna apply for five million dollars there. Um so I, who knows if we get it or not, but but I think we're well positioned. So so that's also great. The other thing, and this is leftover from a meeting the other day, they continue to uh update and share design possibilities. As you look at the wall, the stuff on the right are older iterations. And the stuff on the left was particularly focusing on um the entrance. Um something has to happen different with the canopy. That's just like a placeholder right now. But but at our last meeting of the building committee, people were particularly attracted to Gable three, option A two. So the one right in front of Rich. Uh and 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 it's it's really interesting, right? The the architects could speak much better to this than I can. But this side of the building is like a a story and a half. And you see the gables above the the first floor and that that's uh uh shops, gyms. That's uh uh shops, gyms, uh uh other things. The entrance is now um glass and has to let a lot of light into the building. And to address our issue with entrance ambiguity, uh it'll be clear as day that that's what the entrance is.
Sorry, what's the difference between any and any two?
Do you see the, it's like a second gable, so.
Right here. Oh.
Yeah, they're very, they're very similar.
One of the problems where you have to find the seventeen things wrong.
I I will tell you that this, I figured this out. I think this is my fifth building, fourth building project. And this is where it gets real. There's two things here. The designing, you start to really see that there is something there. And it really gets real at this point. The other side of this is the price is still high, and we have a lot of work to do. Because this is a really good project. We have great architects and owners, project managers are terrific. We hired the right people. We've done the right thing. But we need to figure a way to get this to pass the orders. And one way is to bring the price down, as Peter's trying to do, and the other way is to have a design that just allows people. And this design is getting to that point.
So so they're gonna keep coming back with different iterations of it. Uh, the other thing you can sort of see on those is the the side view as you come up the driveway. And the broad consensus was the gables were more interesting than the than the rectangular. Rectilinear box or whatever.
See, the interesting part of this, and I've started to get into this, you drive up the driveway. That's the back of the school, and you don't want it to look like the back of the school, cuz that's what faces Route seven. But you also want the entrance to really stand out, which is on the opposite side. So there are really two sides that you really wanna make sure look good. You don't want Route seven to look like you're looking at the back of a building.
And and so really interesting design choices of windows and materials and and. On and on, so they'll just keep coming back to us with more and more interesting things. Uh, the 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 canopy they put in as a placeholder, uh they wanna do that in some way that affords. People entering and exiting the building, some protection from the elements. Uh, but um. But that it's elegant and that it fits in with the overall design, uh so.
Oh, you can't be themselves.
We we may not, and and they they may just. Right, and they just extend the roof line a little bit or something, so so we'll see, but. The the those are those are the quick updates. We'll we'll be having a very big meeting on June sixteenth, which is Monday, the last day of school. And and we hope to have, um, a lot of stuff's gonna come together very quickly. Uh, we'll hope to have some some really solid price estimates by then. We may know about this grant that I just mentioned around then. Uh, the the other update was we got the well report of the Wells Lake or the well that they dug. Uh, and the likelihood of it being able to um um sustain the ground source heat pumps, and and that's a doubt. So, um, um, that that's that's good. I think, Steve, anything else in the building?
Well, I don't think so. I I think now's the time. Peter said things come together quickly. You start, you start to get price, you start to see the geothermal. Is is a possibility. You start to see the design. So before you weren't able, go online, watch the meetings. If you can come to meetings or zoom in, come in. This is all gonna come together very fast, and and it's all good. All good, just.
All good, the price is going down. The price went down six percent.
But we just need to keep it going down because it's expensive. And we need to answer the questions of the people who have really intelligent questions about price, about design, about. Uh, gold, lead gold, about the. Everything we do, we need to be able to go out there and as a school committee, sell it. We have a yes group, which is a political group that's gonna help sell it, and we gotta do our best.
What's the yes group?
It's the group of community activists.
Nonprofit, it has to be registered to the state and then registered on April first. And it's basically uh vote yes mining.
So in Massachusetts, a political, the office of political campaign finance is very. Strict about who can go out and sell the project. So this will be a group that is registered to be able to do that.
Who's on that group? So are there people from this committee?
I'm gonna join it.
Yeah, a a number of people might join it, um, the uh.
Is it in formation?
It it's in formation, it's wrong. Uh, Steve Boyd's a good contact on it. Re- Rebecca Golds from Great Barrington and a number of people.
It's very clear that, for instance, Peter, he can go, and the architects can go to meetings, they can get facts, but they can't. Give a, we need you to do that. They can't advocate for it, and we need to have a group that's able to do that.
Yeah, absolutely.
And they can they can raise money, they can do mailings, have a website.
Yard signs.
Yeah.
Outreach. Yeah, the whole thing. So it's exciting. So so let me shift gears to to my last thing, and this like. You you just sometimes you feel like you're going through the wringer. The the latest headache these days is measles. Um, and we've been working with the, and let me just say the name right, um, the Southern Berkshire Public Health Collaborative. And the nurses about getting ready for the prospect of measles being in our community. Uh, and and. Not, uh, I don't know how to say this. Uh, the oldest of us in the room remember people getting measles and and. Almost everybody else hasn't encountered it uh in in recent times, right? Our vaccination rate in our schools is very high. It's ninety-five percent in all three buildings, but in in each of the buildings, that means there are about twenty people um in each building.
Eagle has some very troubling reports about. Some of our neighboring districts and areas.
Yeah.
Shocking, shocking.
Yeah.
I I shouldn't, I hope it's not accurate, but.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know. Um, eh eh, so. I I wanna ensure that we're protected, and I'm gonna send a letter out either tomorrow or Monday. That gives some additional detail about measles and what's going on with measles and and really. That that the best choice is to be vaccinated. The big kicker on this is. If you're unvaccinated and you're exposed, and the threshold for exposure is very, very low, so like. Almost no contact, you could contract it, uh then, um. Then you have to stay home, uh if you're unvaccinated for at least twenty-one days. Uh, which is a really long time. Uh, so if measles comes to us, and it's obviously in in Texas and Florida and New Jersey and New York. And I think it's just making its way up to Connecticut, so I think it's likely that it comes to us. Uh, it it it'll be a a really big deal. Uh, I'm gonna send out an information letter and then remind people about it. Um, and.
How do we know that there are twenty? Twenty children who are not vaccinated?
So i- i- in Massachusetts, we we know, right, so.
So we know where they are.
Oh, yeah.
Can we reach out specifically?
We have. Yeah, and and I'm working closely.
Some broad-based.
No, 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 like, first by person, each of the nurses has called all of these people. In Massachusetts, you're allowed to have what's called a a religious exemption, though interestingly, like. Really, I can only think of one, maybe two religions that that would forbid somebody from getting vaccinated. Uh, uh, but but it's labeled a religious exemption, and there's discussion at the state level. Whether that should be uh rescinded as an option at all. Uh, um, so. Peo- people take this really personally, but on the other hand, there's some number of people in in our community that are compromised immune systems. Uh, and then the other group of people that are really vulnerable are are pregnant women, right? Uh, and uh, and and so there's a whole protocol around this, all good, all the details. But but if if you're exposed, there's a little window when you could run and get vaccinated. Uh, very quickly, ideally, most people get vaccinated before then. Uh, the twenty-one days of isolation uh would be devastating, right? I mean, it's COVID all over again. Uh, a- and then if you've been following this, probably the the bigger issue. Is may not even be the initial exposure, but sort of the lingering impact of it. And and what it might do to one's immune system over time, so a a small percentage. Um, of of people, um, after getting measles could pretty quickly get. Uh, pneumonia, but but if you go past that. Um. Um, it it might make you really susceptible, or your immune system really susceptible to to. Other possibilities down down the road. Um, so not one to mess around with at all. I'll send this out. Uh, some subset of people will freak out about it. I'll field most of the calls, but I wanted you to know about it, cuz you might field some of them. Uh, and the the uh. Southern Berkshire Public Health Collaborative has been really helpful. They have access to some number of vaccines. Uh, uh, and 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 they could be helpful. The other thing I found was really interesting was. I- if you think you have measles, it's really important that you call your doctor. And you don't just show up at your doctor's office, because one of the things that pediatricians were talking about, we did this giant set of calls. Uh, is i- i- if they suspected, they might actually, um, um. Masked up and see you in the parking lot in your car, rather than risk the possibility of you coming into the office. Uh, and and spreading it, uh, and that was the case also to the emergency room doctors. Uh, the worst thing in the world would be for people to come in to the emergency room and and have it spread. There, right, to a place for lots of people presumably are have compromised immune systems or are at risk.
And for those who are online or are gonna see this, what Peter's doing is sending out information and letting people know. There's no requirement to get a vaccination. There's no requirement of anything. We're just trying to inform people. We do.
And we can help people understand that it's easy to get a vaccination, like we can.
And then it's their tax, yeah. Yeah, it's it's on them.
Um, but is it, is it easy to?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Didn't it used to be that to get into public school in kindergarten or first grade, we had to have certain vaccinations?
That's the rule now, but there's this religious exception.
Yeah.
So of the of our group that doesn't doesn't have it, you have a a at least some documentation of this religious exemption on file.
Every single one.
Okay.
Yeah, and and the nurses spend a tremendous amount of time doing this and and. And it's all like in a giant state system, and and all the pediatricians and healthcare providers put things in and they can try and get.
And is it possible to declare a religious exemption without proving? Right, without proving that there is.
The the language.
Actually a religion that specifies.
Right.
These answers, yes.
Yeah, so the language in Massachusetts is really open-ended, so you don't need a.
Be a religion or one.
Right, you don't need a letter from your.
Yeah. There's also people who claim under established religions, but that's not what that religion really teaches. Yes.
That's why they want to rescind.
Yeah.
Cuz it's got, it's full of holes.
Yeah.
Right, right. And and like a generation older than me saw this with polio or something, right, so.
I I had a seventy-five-year-old friend of mine. Go to his doctor to see if he was still, uh, if his MMR vaccine was still effective. And the doctor did a test and said it still is, and he was, he was vaccinated in like. I mean, this three or something. And he's seventy-five, and it's still working.
If it's great.
Do we need an emergency plan if there's an exposure? Because measles hangs in the air, so if you know that. There's an exposure, then we need an emergency plan for these kids, and we need to get them out of the building ASAP.
Yeah, no, we we we, yeah, but we've been talking tons about this. It it's interesting, even, um. E- e- even like. One of the things you're supposed to do is have a a room with negative pressure. But we don't, a- and for all practical purposes, even the hospital doesn't really, there's one room that that is.
With COVID, there's a number of rooms been built, but it's not as many as they need when there's a pandemic.
Yeah, so so we have, we have a uh, we have a plan. There's a whole set of protocols. We're continuing to work. And and have these, um, um, other meetings with. Nurses, public health people, doctors, school district people like me, superintendents. Uh, and 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 we're we're talking about it. Very little makes me nervous. This one actually makes me nervous.
There's any hospital during the pandemic, during the recent pandemic, and there is another one. If you are not seriously ill, or you show up the emergency room thinking of COVID, they will see you in a tent outside. Because of the exposure.
Yeah.
And how about the staff? Do we know on the staff who might be at risk if a child has measles? Like, do we know how to take care of?
We had a staff as a member, something in it.
Well, no, if the staff has. Or something like that, then they would also.
So when when I send this out to families, I'll also send it out to um staff. I think people are pretty good about monitoring their own health in relation to things. Uh, and um, and and we'll we'll offer them support, right? We're in, the two big groups are are people who are pregnant, uh, and there's some who are pregnant in our schools, and then and then uh. People who for some reason are are, you know. Compromised, right, immunocompromised. And and presumably, people who are immunocompromised are very self-aware and and sensitive about that.
Yeah, but those pregnant women need to be. Just protected, you know, with the power. That would be a. That would be horrific.
Yeah, yeah, catastrophic, very really, really serious. Um, so we'll we'll um, we'll keep working.
Yeah, I think so. In some committees, policy is not met. Bill Building signals.
Hasn't met.
Superintendent evaluation. Bill, so.
Um, it has not met. No, we're working on, should, yeah, I I do too, and we're working on coming up with some dates.
Good, good. That's what I was gonna say, we need to get that on finance.
Has not met.
And negotiations is not yet needed. Personnel report?
Um, just a very, a handful of, uh, like extracurricular planning, something just twenty years.
Okay. Moving ahead, Sharon FY twenty-five, third primary transfer reform?
Yeah. And should hopefully have all seen this. It's pretty standard, three of the thirteen completed, work for changing needs during the school year. The first one is for more English textbooks at the high school. The second one was library books for the PK program at the high school. And then, um, there was an over expenditure on a math account, and we took care of that. The fourth one, I I tried to divide these into like, um, transfers, so the fourth one. Was multiple, it was done at the middle school.
Okay, can we go back to number two for Sam?
Yes.
The. Assemblies, the two thousand dollar budget, what does that leave us for?
Uh, if they have presentations come in, like an author come in to do a presentation.
Cuz I feel like that's been transferred out of like pretty frequently in the last few years. Am I right with that? Yeah.
Yeah, fortunately, they've had grants. A lot of the schools have had grants, so. Yeah.
Sorry, let me pick up.
No, that's okay. I was waiting to see the other questions on. Um, same thing, so you'll see here, under professional service and fees. They had a guest artist there and a chorus accompanist. And then different books, they needed more text, help ed, library books. The fifth one was for software to the end of the year. Julio has talked about this with the finance committee. We're using more and more software, both administrative and educational. This is more for administrative software, and of course, the cost keeps going up. And as Cynthia talked a little bit, we won't be getting a completely new curriculum in twenty-six, so. We're trying to get, if you wanna explain what kind of books, cuz I don't remember what the name was.
They were decodable readers.
Decodable readers. Is that like part of the curriculum that you want?
Um, it's, um, it's a big piece of learning, of of teaching kids to learn to read.
Is there another word that follows?
It is, yes, the books are based on the fine patterns that we teach them, right? So if the if it's a consonant vowel consonant. That we're teaching them all those letters and the sounds, but it really only has those words in them. Which is called a decodable, cuz they can decode the whole book.
So, if you're, if we end up getting the curriculum that we would like to get.
Yes.
Is this kind of extra, or is this? Is this kind of extra, or is this, would you be able to get less of the curriculum, or?
Yeah, I think so. Yes, I do know exactly what you're saying. Our, we have a very strong phonics program now, and. There is a, uh, ELA curriculum out there that is really just the knowledge building base. And so that would be around building vocabulary, uh, work building, um, you know, knowledge building, um. Comprehension, right, all the other pieces that aren't the phonics and phonetics. And so if we pair them together, which often is what people do, is they use foundations integrity. And pair it with this Great Minds curriculum, which gives all the other components of reading together, so. I thought, well, it would be, you know, well-received to at least have that skills piece that decodable was to support the teachers.
So, requiring pieces.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, the next one covers the overage, slight overage in the stipend account, as well as for field trips. And additional PD at the elementary school. Number eight covers the balance of Shakespeare and Company. I think we see this often. Um, we often have grants, or, you know, there's fundraising and tickets, and sometimes that doesn't cover. All of the costs, so this covered the rest of the cost. As we've talked about also in the past, interpretation services, because of the number of, um, students we have. Who speak fluent multilingual, and then staff travel to conference. And this year, we set up a paraprofessional and administrative assistant mentors stipend account. Because we have so many new, uh, of both. And we have a music field trip at the high school that we put, um, a little bit more money into. And then at the middle school, we had a guest ceramics teacher. So we moved money from general supplies to the professional services fees activities.
Is there any questions? During the voting.
Post still approved the FY twenty-five, third quarter transfer report.
Second, there's a motion, and the second, by either bill that you wanna take. Any other discussion? A little call, uh, Allison. Thank you, um, Phil Bowe.
Yes.
Phil Fields.
Yes.
Diane.
Yes.
Sarah.
Hi.
Rich.
Hi.
And I, it's unanimous. Thanks, Sharon.
Yeah.
Any older new business before the committee?
Just the, the calendar for next year is in, in your packet. Uh, we'll have to vote on it. At some point, right?
No, I, I thought you voted on the calendar.
Yeah, it's just a school committee meetings that are. The school committee meetings that are. So, and there are two versions. There's like the written version, and there's the graphic version, just so that you know that.
Thank you. Any public comment? Say, Don, by unanimous consent, we are majority.